Roll call please.
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Here.
Whitmore, aye. White. Here.
Please stand for tonight's invocation and pleasure of allegiance. The next invocation will be provided by Sarah Martin, Youth Ministry Director at the Point Church.
Where would you like me to stand?
Right there.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
If you would prepare yourselves in a place uncomfortable for you to pray. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for you, for being the Creator, the All-Knower, and the ultimate One in Control. God, I pray protection over this community, over the people that live here, the people that work here, protection over our first responders as they care for us, prayer over those who make the decisions here. God, I pray for them. I pray for wisdom and discernment as they prepare for this evening. God, we thank you for your Son Jesus Christ and his sacrifice for us. In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Of course, item on the agenda approval of minutes of previous meeting. I need a motion to approve the January 20th, 2024 regular board meeting minutes.
A move.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to Mayor's report. I need a motion to adopt resolution appointing Margot Nelson to the Planning and Zoning Board member.
A move.
Second.
A discussion? I will have a discussion when we get to the end of this. Roll call.
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. I need a motion to adopt appointment resolution for Adam Brayden to the Planning and Zoning Board member.
A move.
Second.
Roll call.
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. I need a motion to adopt resolution appointing Jen Levin to the Planning and Zoning Board member.
Aye.
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. I need a motion to adopt appointment resolution for Robert Owen to the Planning and Zoning Board member.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. I need a motion to adopt appointment resolution for Jonathan Rickert to the Planning and Zoning Board member.
Aye.
All right, roll call.
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. I need a motion to adopt appointment resolution for Fred Seaman to the Planning and Zoning Board member.
A move.
Second.
Roll call.
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Now, I was told by our village administrator and David and Sanjay that these individuals on the Planning and Zoning Board, their terms are coming due. Some of them were up and some of them were going to be coming due, so we had to go back and look at that. I had to contact each one of the members and see if they wanted to stay on as a board member, and they elected to do so. So, that's why they're individual, but it's one entire planning and zoning board, so that's all I wanted to say. Anybody else have any discussion on this? Okay, I need a motion to approve, adopt a appointment resolution, a resolution appointing Brian Hasky to Deputy Chief of the Fire Department.
A move.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. Brian, would you come forward? Raise your right hand. Repeat after me.
I.
State your name.
Brian Hasky. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support. That I will support. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And then I will faithfully discharge. And then I will faithfully discharge. The duties of the office. The duties of the office. Of Winter Harbor Deputy Chief of Fire. Of Winter Harbor Deputy Chief of Fire. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. Congratulations. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, it's customary.
Fire chief?
Yes. Customary for promotions like this within the Fire Department have a pad spinning as well, spinning from a family member. And this will be Brian and Shawna's daughter. I kind of band-aided.
Yeah.
Yeah. But that name building's over there. Brian's been a member of the Winter Harbor Fire Department for 28 years. He knows Winter Harbor very well, and he loves Winter Harbor, and he loves being a fireman, and happy to have him at my right, by my right side, so thank you for introducing this.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And his wife Shawna is also Assistant Chief of their department. I'm surprised you didn't want to do the badge thing, Shawna.
I do it.
All right, next item. I need a motion to approve a resolution honoring the Planning and Zoning Board Chair, Bob Moss Stettler, retiring after numerous years of service to this village.
A move.
Second.
I'll leave, just a call for a roll.
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye. Motion carried. Bob, would you come forward?
Okay, whereas Robert Bob Moss Stettler has served many terms as a member of the Planning and Zoning Board of this village, extending back to the 1990s, and most recently serving more than a decade as the chairman of this board. And whereas Bob taught with, brought with him very deep knowledge and experience obtained through a career as one of the key land use planners within the Lake County government. And whereas the experience and knowledge Bob has had, has, had, was an integral part of the good decisions made by the Planning and Zoning Board throughout his terms in office, because Bob was never shy about sharing his opinions and the rationales and reasons behind them. And whereas Bob was widely seen as a mentor to all who worked with him, as he was more than happy to share ideas about things that would better serve this community, and was particularly patient with those coming from lay backgrounds and the application of sometimes complex or controversial laws that occasionally defy common sense when viewed without the necessary long-term perspective regarding looking at what is actually best for the village as a whole rather than just what a particular land owner wants for him or herself right now. And whereas throughout his time working with the village, Bob worked very effectively with a broad group of elected officials, employees, volunteers, and the general public tirelessly, respectfully and compassionately and kindly, with good humor and respect for all who are involved with land use and planning within our community. And whereas Bob has decided to step down and spend time, more time, on personal pursuits with his family and friends. Now therefore, be resolved by the Village of Winter Harbor, Lake County, Illinois as follows. Section one, Robert Bob Moss Stettler is honored as a truly outstanding member of the village, whose dedication and legacy shall be honored gratefully and fortuitously by our people and this board. Section two, Robert Bob Moss Stettler is thanked for his decades of dedicated work and wished great joy and happiness in retirement. And section three, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage and shall be placed in the permanent records of this village as testament to his enduring character and tireless contributions to this village. Congratulations.
It's been an honor. Thank you all. Great.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
I want to say one thing. When I called all the Planning and Zoning Board members to see if they wanted to stay on the Planning and Zoning Board, most of them, I say all of them, you know, answered either by, you know, calling me back or when I talked to them on the phone, or by email, they sent me an email saying, yes, they definitely wanted to stay on the Planning and Zoning Board. I called Bob last because I figured, no, he's going to stick around. And when he said, no, I want to step down, I go, I about fell off my chair upstairs, because I didn't expect that coming. But I said, now I got to find a chair. As soon as I said that, Bob said, Margot Nelson. So, I said, really? He goes, yes. And he gave me probably a 10-minute explanation over the phone as to why Margot would be a good person to take over as chairperson. So, Dave and I went to lunch with Margot and asked her, and she said she'd be happy to do it. So, that's why I wanted to wait to the end to bring all this up. So, Bob, I want to thank you for your years and all the wealth of information and help you've given the residents of this village, to the Planning and Zoning Board.
All right, thank you, and every one is certainly.
I attended a couple of the meetings, and I watched you diligently in explaining everything to the letter. I mean, you're, you're very amazing, and you had a lot of knowledge, and I hope you give Margot your phone number.
Yes, yes, but I'm sure it's good hands.
Okay, I'm sure, I'm sure. Thank you again, once again, thank you for everything. All right. Also, I want to also mention, Dave mentioned, wanted me to say this, with Margot being, we have one open spot for the Planning and Zoning Board with, so we'll be looking for someone to fill that position. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay, I wanted to make that. A couple other comments. I want to thank the departments for providing a report, the police, the fire, and the community development reports. I think this is awesome, and we, it's important that we have that, and it gives us all the insight of what the departments are doing. And one other item, I know our trustee Whitmore will bring up to speed a part of, right, but this Saturday, we have Rumble in the harbor. I believe we're close to being full, are we not, Dave?
We're getting there.
Yeah, and so, come on out, it's a fun night, it'll be our second annual, so, or second one this year, I believe, so, or, we had one last year. Yeah, so, yeah, for a second one, so, come on out, check, take, take a look, and watch them do what they do in the ranks, so, that's, that's all I have. So, now we move on to the village administration's report.
I have no reporting.
About the clerk's correspondence.
We have nothing.
Thank you. So, I move to new business committee reports, administration, and community development committee. Trustee Bray.
I make a motion to approve the accounts table warrant 2023-12 in the amount of $235,301.68.
Second. Any discussion on that warrant? I don't have anything tonight either, so, roll call.
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I'm going to read the first and second reading and set aside the rules of the President and the Board of Trustees to adopt the amending of the wage policy ordinance of the Village of Winter Harbor to conform with the requirements of the PATE Act for all workers.
Trustee, Kara is here to give the board a quick overview of that ordinance.
Second.
Second. I didn't think I heard it, but I thought, maybe I was not hearing it.
You can just.
Okay, so.
They started to get out early, that's all.
Okay.
PATE Act was set to start January 1 of this year, and we came up with a policy to apply to all our part-timers because they don't have any paid time off right now, and with this, they will. They get one hour for every 40 hours' work.
Great, thank you, Kara. Any questions for Kara? Any other questions on that?
This also, if I can add, this also applies to new hires. Right now, they're, they don't get their vacation for the first year. However, they, under the law, they're supposed to get the pay leave for all workers, which allows them to accumulate up to five days. This, once they vest with their, vet here for a year and they get a vacation, then the pay leave for all workers disappears, they don't get any more of that, and that's really all on that.
And this is a state law, we get to do this.
We have essentially no choice.
Right.
How does this, how does ours compare, like, with other, I mean, I really have no, I'm, I'm from no idea how it's being implemented in other industries and stuff. What is, what's the common?
This is, what we have done is typical for government.
So, this is the typical, I mean?
Yeah, I don't know what private industries really are doing, they, you know, the, the real aim of this wasn't municipalities. You know, for example, the park districts are exempted from this for some reason. I'm really not quite sure why. But it was aimed at the large employers in the private sector that hire large, large numbers of people on hourly wages and give them permanent part-time status so that they never have to give them benefits. This at least gives them something to deal with. They won't be fired if they just suddenly have a kid come down with the flu and they can't come to work that day, which is one of, it's a, it's a, to protect those workers. It's really not aimed at us, but the language of the act is broad enough that it'll swept us in a little bit of air guns.
Okay, I was just clearing this up, so, first thing, there is.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Roll call.
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Motion carried.
I make a motion to approve park dispatch where you have a special event permit for the four Olympic themed party on Sunday, April 21st, 2024, 4:00 AM, I'm sorry, 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Roll call.
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I make a motion for the public sale of the property of Zero Russell Road to number 0404407, 014.
Second. Okay, a lot of forests. I need to touch on that.
So, what we're looking for is, we're just looking to gauge the board to see if there's any interest in possibly marketing the property, the property adjacent to it is currently for sale. So, what we would be requesting is if you would like the possibility of exploring that option to start with the motions of trying to get appraisal done upon it for consideration by the village board and potting forward.
There's a, to pick up from what Dave was saying, there's a, there's a process that's required by statute we have to go through, and in fact, there is an interest in selling this property, and it involves getting the, finding, hiring an appraiser, getting the property appraised, and a bunch of other steps. Not terribly complicated, but there's stuff we have to, we have to follow through publication and advertising to get the rest of it. But before we go down and spend that money, we wanted to know whether or not this was some piece of property that you folks thought we should hang on to, in which case, there's no sense spending that kind of money before we get into it. And vice versa, if it looks like this is something you think is truly surplus property, then it's entirely appropriate to expend funds as long as we're going to feel reasonably confident we're going to get the money back after the sale proceeds.
Where's the location of this property? I know it's in the package.
It's in Gaddis.
It's in the corner of Gaddis, okay.
Southeast corner of Gaddis and Russell Road.
And the one property right across the street is up there.
The one to, right to the east of it.
East of it, right.
There's no sewer water in there.
Okay.
There is no sewer and water in there, and that's correct.
Basically, we're, I think we're taking care of the lawn right now because we, it was given to us.
I have done for.
There's that, so.
Yeah. I've had that for at least 30 years of.
Okay, any comments on that one? Roll call.
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye. Motion carried.
Okay, and then I make a motion to consider accepting the contract proposed by Comcast to renew connectivity services to the Village of Winter Harbor for an additional 36 months or three years.
Second. Any discussion on that? Okay, roll call.
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you for, trustee Brayden. Move on to public safety. Trustee White.
Thank you. Make a motion to consider approval of 2024 season Marina security contract.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Nope, all right. Roll call please.
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, make a motion to set aside the rules of the President and the Board of Trustees to waive the first and second reading and adopt the ordinance amending multiple sections of the municipal code of Winter Harbor to comply with the changes in state law relating to cannabis.
Second. Any discussion on that?
Yes, if we could, can we have asked for the motion to be amended in the preparation of the draft ordinance and the request for board action? There were several versions that went back and forth between the Chief of Police, me, and the court, and somewhere in there, we lost section, a portion of it, a very small portion, but section 130.15, it would be subsection C, which would, which should read, no person less than 21 years of age or possess any item of drug paraphernalia used for ingesting or otherwise introducing cannabis into the human body or in preparing cannabis for that use unless otherwise exempt under or under state law. The reason that that needs to be in there is because the act that legalized cannabis does not make it legal for people under 21 to possess or to use cannabis or drug paraphernalia for drug, 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 so, if that, if the second, if the motion, then the second would be amended to include that language, we can get the whole thing fixed.
I would amend that motion of, of, for 20 months.
Okay, you need a second. Second, second, great, thank you, Bob. All right, any other discussion on that? Okay, roll call please.
Brayden, aye. Mirabella. McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore. Aye.
White.
Motion carried.
I make a motion to set aside the rules of the President and the Board of Trustees to waive the first and second reading and adopt the ordinance modernizing fire and burglar alarm code provisions within the municipal code of Winter Harbor.
Second, second, any discussion? And roll call please.
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Motion carried.
Two years of work for Adam, and finally went through it. Who died in this a long time.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution establishing a fire department fee schedule.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Motion carried.
Make a motion to consider adoption of new policies for the permanent.
Second.
Okay, discussion on that? Okay, roll call.
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, trustee White. We move on to public parks and recreation. Trustee Mirabella.
First thing I have is a motion to consider approval for his solicitation for the year 2024, 2025 joint purchase master contract for Rock Salt with the Illinois Department of Central Management Services.
Second.
Motion second, discussion.
Somewhere.
Yeah, we're, don't have to buy much, we didn't use much. We replenished.
Might be doing a Thursday. Shh. Over here.
Yeah, well.
Paperwork still coming.
Yeah, I know. Okay, motion second, no discussion. Roll call.
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Motion carried.
Second item I have is to move to set aside the rules of President Board of Trustees to waive the first and second readings of the ordinance amending 17.99 of the municipal code of Winter Harbor clarifying penalties for certain violations of the combined water and sewer system and the existing.
All right, any discussion on that? Roll call.
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Motion carried.
Third item I have is for a motion to consider approval of covenant code and, covenant code and the Village Park line maintenance contract.
Second. All right, discussion on that?
It's just what we do.
Yeah, what we do. I agree. Roll call.
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Motion carried.
Fourth item I have is motion to consider the approval to accept equipment bill. Our proposal for the 2025 Peterbilt dump truck from Lenco, equipment sales at a cost of $140,417.
Second. Any discussion on that?
This was on our list.
Yes, it's in the budget.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Fifth item I have is motion to consider professional services for let service line inventory assistance by Baxter Movement Consulting Engineers for $40,000.
Second, any discussion? I will say, reading the document, the board action, this assistance will be funded through a $40,000 grant a $40,000 grant that the village received from the Illinois EPA, so we're not paying anything, this is actually a grant, so I just want everybody to know that. Any other discussion on that? Rokoff, please.
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Blake.
Motion carried.
Right, so the sixth item is motion to consider approval for professional service for lead service line replacement plan assistance by Baxter Movement Consulting Engineers for $14,900.
Okay, second. Any discussion on that? I just said I will be funded through the water, funded through the water fund sixty, so it's just $14,000.
Yeah, this is something they're familiar with, with that means it could be a complex situation, so we'd benefit from this.
Right, absolutely. Thank you. Rokoff?
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Blake.
Motion carried.
All right, seventh item I have is motion to consider waiving rental fees for the Razzle Dazzles to rent the Slater Building on Sunday, April 14th, 2024.
Second. Okay, any discussion on that?
Helps them out a lot, it's a good thing, a lot of girls from there coming in there.
Really have it.
It's good, I, I, they don't know more than I, I don't believe, I don't believe.
If I have it here, but it doesn't really say.
Yeah, probably the women.
Thank you.
The Razzle Dazzles are.
Right, because they're going to Notre Dame for the champion, national championship.
No, no, it's not it. It's not my calendar.
You just go show up.
Yell somebody, it's not my calendar.
Be there, everyone has to be there on April 14th.
You should know.
All right, Rokoff?
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Blake.
Motion carried.
Right, and the eighth and final item is a motion to consider a partnership between assistance and healthcare, AIH, and Winter Park Recreation Department to organize a 5K walk run during the summer of 2024.
Okay, discussion on that?
I think it's good, it brings people into town.
Yeah, breaks them, they've done, been here before.
Yes.
Okay, Rokoff?
Brayden, aye. Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Blake.
Motion carried. Thank you, trustee Mirabella. Next item is public comments. If there's anybody who would like to address the board, we just ask you to provide us your name and your address. Right up to the podium.
My name is Matthew Carter, 335 Roberts Road, I'm here. On behalf of assistance and healthcare, assault, and mega Durant here, we just want to appreciate you guys doing the partnership with Scott and Park Board. You know, we've been around for over 40 years supporting cancer patients in Ryan, Illinois. We're 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organization, and we don't receive any state or federally funding, so we're here, so it's a, you know, there's a huge need even for patients that do live in our town here, so it is going to, and we'll be back in the community, so we really appreciate it, so. And on behalf of the Razzle Dazzles, my mother-in-law, we appreciate that.
Thank you, Matt.
And thank you for your service.
Thank you. Any one else? All right, I guess I'll start with my left, I'm finished with this, trustee Whitmore.
Yeah, I just want to start off and say congratulations to Brian Hasky. And then also this Saturday, we have our second Rumble in the harbor with How Entertainment. We have a lot of new foods that we're bringing to Winter Harbor. Last time we did this, it was a lot of fun, we had a lot of guests from even out of state, people from Michigan, Wisconsin, Indiana coming, so it definitely brings a large group of people to Winter Harbor that wouldn't necessarily be here. Next Thursday, we do have our community 365 flashlight egg hunt for the teens. So come on out at last, I think last year, for 15 seconds, so hopefully it'll last a longer this time. They're gonna reconfigure where they're hiding them, so the kids, it makes it a little trickier. Next Saturday, we have our alliance club egg hunt and lunch with the Easter Bunny at the Slater Building. And then just as a reminder, we're always looking for volunteers, especially for gym night and team night. We don't have a huge group of people on the park and rec board, so it does make it a little harder to have those fully staffed, so if you're interested in volunteering, sign up.
Do you need any bikes for the Easter egg hunt?
Always.
Well, I'll talk, discuss.
Definitely.
All right, thank you, trustee Whitmore. Trustee Brayden?
I want to thank all of the members of the TCB for their service because they do a great job and I appreciate it, and I just want them to know that. And congratulate Brian Hasky for your new role as deputy chief, you've earned it and deserved it. And I think Bob Mostel for the so many years that he's put in, his knowledge is incredible, he never ceases to amaze me, I'm telling you. And thanks to Marvel for stepping up in that role, it's going to be some hardship to fill. And lastly, I just want to thank the department heads for all of their reports because I read them and they're very helpful to me and I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Brayden. Trustee McCarthy?
Yeah, a lot of the same things, so congrats to Brian, been around a long time, served a lot of his pasties, so just thank you for continuing to step up and do that, and I know it means a lot to the chief and everything to be there for him. That's, thank you. And same with Bob, I've never known him that well, but seen him in action and it's always been, you know, great to see him, you know, and a lot of people don't realize, you know, that he's a wealth of knowledge, but if you see him, you know, at a meeting, he really does try to listen to, you know, the residents, I think, and do, does try to help them, you know, it's not just, you know, knowing everything, I always felt like he was trying to, you know, find a way to work within the code to help people when they, I mean, so it wasn't all, you know, was the coach say, was, you know, well, you know, is there a way in here to, you know, to help this person out, you know, it wasn't just all by the book, which I thought was, you know, there was a very human element to it, which is so important, so. I just also want to mention that myself and village administrator, Ed, Ed Con and trustee Brayden, a couple weeks ago, attended the Lake County Municipal League legislative breakfast, where a number of, a couple of state reps and state senators and other community leaders were in attendance, talking about a number of issues. One of the big ones was the governor's recent budget proposal, which includes the grocery tax elimination, which is an elimination of 1% tax on groceries, which won't, if, pass won't have a huge effect on Winter Park, because we don't have a grocery store, but it will affect us, but will have a big effect on a number of neighboring towns, we do have grocery stores, some towns more than others, but the elimination of that tax will affect the local municipalities, that's who it will hit, not the state funding, it'll come out of the local municipality's cuts. And while I do think that the grocery tax shouldn't be there, it is a regressive tax that hits the poor people in the middle class, you know, the worst, they're the ones who, you know, shouldn't be taxed on food and things they need, like milk and groceries. At the same time, it's coming out of the local funding who we've already had, our funding taken away. So up until 2011, local government, the local government distributor fund is getting 10%, so, you know, we're supposed to get 10% of all the state income from sales tax, and since 2011, it's hovered in the 6% range for a while, then, you know, if the rate's going, it'll continue to go down like that, so even though Winter Park isn't getting a huge hit from this, we're still going to lose some in other towns, we're going to lose more, Zion has, what, three or four grocery stores, so they're definitely going to take a hit, I don't know how big, and Springfield doesn't have a plan for how they're going to replace those local funds, so just be aware of that and the fact that they're not replacing their local funding in any way for the communities that are, that are getting hit with that.
Now, the owner, the owner of this lake support that bill or not?
No, they do not support that.
I think they did.
Well, they're in favor of the elimination of the grocery tax if the governor has a plan for reciprocating the fund.
Right.
So it's not so much the elimination tax, it's the taking away of the local government funding, so they'd rather see the funding be supplied in some other way, so that's the problem with it, so.
What dollar amount was that, 1%? Did they say?
It all depends on what counties.
Okay.
So it's one for the state.
As a general, huh?
Oh, I don't know the amount for the state.
That they're.
That you know?
Well, the state's portion was 2%.
Okay.
And on regular groceries, like a gallon of milk.
Right.
Mole for bread, and the municipalities was 1% state, I don't know what the total number is.
It's curious.
I can tell you.
I did see that Prisker wrote, or Governor Prisker wrote a, an op-ed in the Tribune a few days ago, they claim that we're actually getting more money, I can't figure the number where it comes from, but, you know, it's creative, kind of thing.
Creative, that was an interesting article. All right.
Yes, I don't know the, the amount, but, yeah, I mean, the grocery tax is a regressive tax, but, you know, like, as I said, the, the idea was that the local government distributor fund would be 10% of what the state takes in from sales tax, but the idea was when they started taking away from that, and it was lower than 6%, we would get that funding, we would get that funding in other ways.
Right. They tried to get it to go closer to the 10%, but they raised it around 1.6 the last time.
And staff will get you those numbers, we're working on trying to calculate those numbers, though the impact's going to be low, but Dollar General does do a lot of food there.
Yeah, and it includes, yeah, Dollar General, the convenience stores, you know, anything from there, so it does have an impact on us and it hurts our neighbors as well significantly, like I said, the Zion we had, buy it, because Jewel, Aldi, Piggly Wiggly, Walmart.
Thank you, trustee McCarthy. A sad moment, got to bring it up. I'm glad you all attended that. I couldn't make it.
Yes, it was a good experience, so.
Trustee Weiss?
Yes, speaking to that, I find it amazing that you put the tax on and then you take the tax away and now the municipalities are going, where's the money coming from?
Yep.
You know, it's like an unfunded mandate.
I was just going to say, they took the work.
The same thing. And I'm talking about that, and Springfield says, you got to do this because we're not a home rule, and so now they're looking to us to figure out how we're going to tax the community to get the money.